At this time, I will call to order the Tuesday, October the 11th, 2022 Regmer Monthly Meeting of the Alexander County Board of Education. And we will recognize Ava Boston, a seventh grade student at West Alexander Middle, to lead us in our pledge. So we welcome you here today.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Odom, can I add something? Ava is a seventh grade student at West Alexander Middle School. She lives in the Bethlehem community. She's the president of the Future Farmers of America Club at West, and her parents are Jordan and April Boston. Thank you very much, Ava.
Thank you. Let me give her a round of applause. Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion regarding opposed agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion by Board Member Schrum.
Second.
Second by Board Member Bowman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for honors and recognition.
Board Member Schrum, will you help me?
Thank you, Chairman Odom, Vice Chairman Cooksey, and Board Members. This is a highlight for me, and it's the first one that we have done in a while. So I love to get started back. Even though this competition was held this summer in Nashville, it's not too late to recognize the winner, or one of the winners, in a national competition for Beta Club. The July Convention has students compete in everything from agri-science to photography, to math, and much more. Jessica Herrera Salinas won fifth place in the freshman division for Spanish. Jessica is now, of course, a sophomore at Alexander Central who takes honors and advanced placement classes and does very well in them. Jessica is the daughter of Jesus Herrera and Abigail Salinas Trejo. She's also taking high school French this year, so that is very impressive. She already fluently speaks Spanish, and she's taking French. I ask you, audience, to please join me in congratulating Jessica. Please come forward.
You hop in the middle, right here in the F.A. Oh, absolutely. Angela, what would you prefer, Mom and Dad also, for the pageant?
Both.
Okay, okay, let's hop in here. Wonderful. Mom and Dad, please come up and join us. You've done very well. We're so proud of your daughter. One more, one more.
I love that.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Congratulations, a little round of applause. And this is just a little plug, Donna, for Beta Club. The national organization is more than 80 years old and promotes achievement, character, leadership, and service. And we certainly thank you, Donna Ree, for your leadership with the group. A round of applause.
We have no speakers signed up for the public comment. Okay, thank you. If I could get a motion regarding the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Motion by Board Member Ryan, second by Board Member Schrum. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Ms. Caitlin Nash, Principal of West Alexander Middle School, to provide us an update.
Good evening, Dr. Hefner, Chairman Odom, fellow board members. I'm so excited to be able to come and speak with you tonight about my home away from home. These are just a couple of pictures from this year that kind of encompass some things that we have going on at West. Our mission statement out at West is to create a community of lifelong learners by encouraging students to learn, achieve, and reach success. And we incorporate this mission statement into our daily mindset at West. When we say encouraging students to learn, achieve, and reach success, we literally mean every student in the building. This can be accomplished by continuing to strengthen our positive culture through trust, hard work, and a growth mentality. We understand that success only happens in a team atmosphere. And this is evident with our testing data for this last school year. For the 21-22 school year, we exceeded growth as a school, and for that, we are very proud. You can see our school improvement goals that are listed on the slide, that we hold high expectations for our students and staff. We use multiple data sources to be able to come up with these school improvement goals. Some of those include discipline data, academic, and attendance data, just to name a few. So we use this to ensure that we can reach the whole child. And with three of the indicators up on the screen, you can see we're at 90% for two of them and 80% completion for the other. So we have about one to two more action steps for those to complete for this year. The National Forum selects schools that are considered academically excellent, developmentally appropriate, and socially equitable and organized, sustain continuous improvement based upon a thorough application process and rebrief. Last fall, September 21, we submitted our application for redesignation as a Schools to Watch, and once again, we were awarded that in the spring of this year. And you can see on the screen some of the strengths that the Redesignation Committee noted about West. We also look for ways to encourage and celebrate within our school building. We highlight Students Weekly or Student Spotlights. These come from each grade level, including exploratories, as well as our cafeteria staff, bus drivers, and custodial staff. We also nominate staff members of the month. And Laura Starnes was our Staff Member of the Month for the month of September. And Glenn Eckert works with us through Horace Mann to provide them with a really nice plaque. So we're very thankful for his partnership in that. We also promote positive behavior by using BART tickets. And this just is tickets that students are able to earn for positive behavior and then exchange for rewards. As well as, we do celebrate small wins with perfect attendance by having three-week perfect attendance coupons that our social worker hands out to students. At West, we do have an acceleration block. This is a 45-minute block where students are grouped according to their individual needs. During this time, we will reteach and preview material with students, fill in any gaps they may have, and also accelerate them to the next level. In addition to this acceleration-for-all block that we have daily, we do offer bi-weekly clubs for every student to ensure well-roundedness. Some of those clubs you see up on the screen: National Junior Beta Club, Student Services, Yearbook, Jazz Band, Advanced Chorus, FFA, and we have about 20 other plus clubs at our school. This year, one of our school improvement goals that we are working towards is to increase parental involvement. We started with the month of September. We had our team breakfast. So each team in the building had a day designated for them. Their parents got to come and enjoy breakfast with their student and with their teachers, as well as fellow classmates. During previous parent focus groups, there seem to be recurring themes about lack of social media information for parents. And so with that, Laura Starnes, one of our CTE teachers, created and shared a presentation about social media with parents and what they can be on the lookout for with their student. And that's also linked in this presentation, if you care to view it. Also this year, we have had an increased involvement with our West Parents in Action Group. This group is our PTO at West. Some of their first projects include purchasing gift cards for students to use their BART tickets for drawings at the end of the nine weeks, selling concessions at our Fall Dance to raise school funds, as well as providing our staff with a taco bar during the month of October. We've had two very successful meetings so far, and I'm really excited to see the progress that WPA makes in helping our school this year. And last but certainly not least, we have an extensive list of community partnerships. And without them, we would not be able to do near enough in-house to support the lists of ever-growing needs and adversities that our students are faced with. So to all of our community partners, thank you. We are West. We had a very successful start to the school year, and I'm very excited to see what the rest of the school year holds. And as always, it's a great day to be a Bulldog. So thank you. Can I answer any questions for anyone?
Thank you for what you're doing. As a parent of a West student, the communication's great. Parent breakfast was great to see a lot of people back in the building. I know I was only there one of the days you had it. You know, your teacher worked in divisions last year. I saw a lot of positives from your staff being involved. And I realized you just shifted into the principal role at the end of the year, but it is very positive, it seemed like, on the data that was shared through that. And I look forward to seeing your continued leadership over there.
Thank you.
Look forward to being able to come and take a look to school, maybe.
Yes.
Eat lunch with you and
We would love that.
Walk around soon, hopefully.
All right.
My days are numbered. I'd like to be there very soon.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Have some more. Yeah, have some more.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, I will recognize Board Member Bowman as we will segue into our Board of Education Committee reports.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Odom. I don't have a ton to report as far as facilities, but we are, we've sent out plans. Pinnacle Architect is getting us plans on the Sugarloaf Project, and they're getting us some plans on the HVAC system at West Alexander. So we're waiting on both of those to come back. And as soon as we get some blueprints and some ideas, I'm sure we're going to need to meet again to decide what route we want to go with both of these needs. That's where we're at. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any other committee chairs you want to elaborate on the foundation tournament?
Yeah, the golf tournament. I do want to put a plug out for that. The Sports Hall of Fame Golf Tournament is October the 29th at Brushy Mountain. We are looking for teams. We're looking for whole sponsors. So if anybody's interested in that, whole sponsor, they have different levels, $100, $250, $500. So we raise money. We use that tournament to raise money for the grants that we give and that will be awarded in November to teachers. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, I guess, on the agenda. But if there's anybody that wants to do a sponsorship or put a team in this tournament, just let me know.
Remind me how much grants Foundation gave out last year?
Last year, I believe it was 12 $500 grants. Which last year was the most until this year. But I won't give any secrets till November.
It's amazing how far them teachers make it, $500.
Oh, it's unreal. I counted one year, and it was thousands of students that were touched by one $500 grant. That was a couple of years ago at the high school. So it's amazing what $500 can do.
Any other reports from committee chairs? Thank you for your hard work. This time, I'll recognize Dr. Hefner for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Odom. Tonight, each of you have a hard copy at your place, and I will also reference some other copies that I'm providing to you. My first bullet is just to let you know that the food drive is underway for the Christian Crisis Center, and the schools are busy collecting food items. It's always exciting to hear about the incentives that teachers give the children as they compete against each other in their classrooms, and it all goes to a great cause. Everything is in place with the pantries, from picking up the cans to planning a pizza party for the top class in each school. And I need to put in a plug here, too. It's elementary schools involved in this competition. I'm going to keep you posted on the results, and hopefully, by Friday, if everybody gets their totals in, we will be able to announce a winner on the radio on Monday morning. So fingers crossed. My second bullet, addressing questions and concerns within the school system. You will find a copy of what has been posted on our website. It is, this has been created, and it's linked under the Parents and Students tab on the website. It should be helpful as far as parents, when they have questions or concerns within the school system. I wanted each of you to have a copy of what is available. We put it on the website as of last week. It reiterates the roles of the Board of Education, some of their primary roles, what the role is as a parent or guardian, and then the avenues to take when they need to address a classroom or some type of activity concern, a building concern, or a district concern. So again, this was made available. It is under the Parents and Students tab on the website. The next packet of materials that I have provided for you has a paperclip. And these are all Head Start documents that are required to be shared with you annually. You have three different documents in that paperclip, and some of the documents don't even pertain to Alexander County. An example is, is that it will talk about early programs for migrant children. Well, we don't have a migrant population. However, it is law that you be aware of those programs. So please review that material. And if you have any questions, I would ask that you contact the Programs Director, Kathy Knip. The fourth bullet, I have done a clipping of the totals as far as school nutrition goes for demographics. This is as of October 4th. And you will see that as a school system, we are at just over 45% of our students qualifying for free and reduced meals. That's probably the largest number that I can remember during my tenure as superintendent. You will see it is broken out by school and what that percentage is. But I know that this week, an email was sent asking to increase lunch prices, and my recommendation is the same as Kathy Caudle's. With free and reduced percentages this high as a county, I do not think that increasing the lunch prices to offer more variety is a good decision at this time. So I wanted to provide you with that information. And the next is celebratory. Each October, National Principals Month recognizes the essential role that principals play in making schools great. Principals are among the hardest-working, yet often the least-recognized individuals in education. Principals set the academic tones for their schools, and it's their vision, dedication, and determination that provide the mobilization for academic achievement and success. Each October, we seek to honor these unsung heroes for their tireless efforts in pursuit of excellence in education. National Principals Month is a widely-recognized celebration of the principalship, marked by national and state resolutions supporting the event, as well as acknowledgements from U.S. Senators and Representatives and top government officials. I would ask that everyone make time at some point during this month to thank a principal for the work they do every day. The theme this year is #ThankAPrincipal. And my last bullet, the North Carolina School Board Association will hold its annual conference from November 14th through the 16th at the Sheraton Curry Convention Center in Greensboro. If you would like to attend, please notify Deborah Watts when she returns to the office on Monday. Do you all have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Item four is unfinished business, and we will recognize Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, our Chief Financial Officer, for some proposed Board of Education policy revisions on the second reading.
We have four policies for second reading tonight. We had some discussion, and there were no changes in the policies. And so I would ask that you approve these on second reading.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Board Member Lautermeat, second by Board Member Bowman. Any discussion regarding the policies? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have six policies tonight for first reading. However, I would like Jessica Anderson, last month, presented the changes in Policy 6140, Student Wellness. The change in this policy is simply adding the goals of the School Health Council to the policy, and I'd like to request approval on first reading for this policy.
And that's Policy 6140, Student Wellness?
Yes.
I make the motion that we accept the change for Policy 6140.
Second. Motion by Board Member Cooksey, second by Board Member Schrum. Any discussion? All in favor of passing Policy 6140 on the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey. At this time, we will recognize Dr. Betsy Curry, Associate Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction Regarding School Improvement Plans.
Good evening, David. David, Chairman, Chairman Odom?
They called far worse.
I was just thinking, I saw you at one point today, and we kind of waved in the road.
Yeah.
Forgive me. Welcome, and I would like to request your approval of the school improvement plans for the schools. You'll notice that East was not included in the packet, and that is deliberately done. They have been given an extension of one month due to the change in administration in the early summer. So if I could have a motion to approve these, or if you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Could I get a motion regarding the proposed school improvement plans?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Ryan and a second by Board Member Bowman. Any discussion regarding the school improvement plans?
I'd like to thank all the people involved in putting them together. I don't, you know, I read the high schools, and I've tried to read most of the other ones. And a lot of time goes into that, if you've ever been on school improvement team, and a lot of people involved. And, you know, it gives a lot of opportunity for growth in that school, in a lot of different areas. And so thanks for the time put into developing them.
And thank you for reading them all. And for the public's awareness, what we do is we divide them out by region, because this is the stack of them minus one. And so it's a lot to read, so we try to have people pay special attention. So Raimi, have you read them all? Bless you.
We have a motion, a second, already. So any more discussion regarding the school improvement plans? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Funding source.
For the HVAC.
Yeah, so, okay, I just saw the Alexander Virtual Academy. That's included in the school improvement plan.
Oh, yes, they have a school improvement plan also, yes.
Okay.
And it was attached, yes.
This time, I'll recognize Board Member Bowman regarding the funding source for HVAC replacement at West Middle School.
Yes, like, we're waiting on these blueprints, but the funding we discussed at our work session, choices of, there's some lottery money, and we could use half-cent sales tax if needed, but
This project is at such a cost, really, in my mind, the only option that we have is to either use lottery funding, and we have to apply through DPI to use that money, or go to the commissioners and ask for a loan, because we only have total about $4.5 million in the lottery funds.
And with that, I mean, two, with two projects that I discussed earlier, you're not going to do both of them with one lottery fund. So we will have to decide what we want and ask for. There's definitely going to have to be an ask for some, for some help as far as a loan or whatever we need. Luckily, the school system is out of debt at the moment, which is a good thing. But like most things, you don't stay out forever. So I feel like we're going to have to get back in that route to do the things that are needed. There's some big projects coming up, so the board will have to decide if we want to use lottery money for one project and ask for a loan for the other, or vice versa. So I feel like by the next month, we should have some ideas of what, be some cost-effective ways to do these things.
And that HVAC system is in excess of $1.00?
$1.3 million.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think it's important for the general public to understand that lottery funds are only earmarked for sticks and bricks for education. They cannot be used for, such as football stadiums. They have to be used for educational purposes. And also, typically, they require an engineer seal. And most of our projects, the smaller projects, do not require engineer or architectural plans. So that's the reason when we have a larger project like this, that it's important for us to look at lottery funds first, because it's so limited what we can use the lottery funds for. I don't think most people really understand the way that works. When the lottery came about, everybody thought this is going to be a cash cow for the school systems, and it's just not that way. Maybe the larger systems that really need a lot of new buildings, that's a different story. But for us, it's limited what we can do.
We can't pay staff, or teachers, or anybody out of lottery money.
Right.
And it took us a pretty good while to get where we're at with the lottery money. And if we dip into that fund, it's just going to pretty much wipe it out until we build it back up again.
We're only getting about $365,000 a year in lottery funding. So it does take a while to build up a reserve like that.
I don't think that they would allow, it has to be classroom instruction-type facilities. I'm really not sure if a multipurpose connotation would work or not, unless PE is, you know, that is a class.
I'm sorry, I forget I'm supposed to be public. I thought PE did count.
It would, it would.
Yeah.
It would for a gym, like that, yes.
But as far as a stadium that was service-only athletics for multi-schools is not allowed.
Right, there's a difference between a gym that's inside the school and an athletics field when you get to the high school stuff. But are we talking about, are we trying, sorry, Scott, and it's just a question. Are we going to tonight decide about West Alexander? So it gives us the ability to move quickly. Is that what we're doing?
Well, we have, I'm assuming Dr. Hefner has done Pinnacle working on that.
I did have the authority to do that, but because this amount exceeds the threshold that I, as superintendent, have the authority to approve, we do need to determine the funding source tonight because that will be a summertime project, unless something happens that we don't anticipate and it completely dies before the end of the year. But it takes time to apply to DPI, to use the funds, to take bids, and all those things that will be required for the project.
And as a point of maybe sharing that people aren't catching, if you're replacing your HVAC system, it's hard to do it with students in the classroom. So then you have a window to do it of the summer. However, every school in North Carolina probably wants to do theirs in the summer. So you've got to be able to move quickly and get contracts and get dates and get your window set. So whatever we do, probably a bit of luck and good planning So, whatever we do, probably a bit of luck and good planning combined. So, anyway, I make the motion we use lottery funds for West Alexander Middle School Air and Heat Project.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Board Member Cooksey and a second by Board Member Schrum. Any further discussion? One caveat that I think would be helpful to the general public and, and, and the people at large, is that at our, at our next meeting, if we could have the historical data about the, the many times since nineteen ninety, I'd say nineteen ninety-nine, where commissioners, they assume debt on our behalf as a school system. And the standard method or the traditional method has been, I think, since nineteen ninety-nine, that they utilize half-cent sales tax proceeds, uh, to help, uh, service those debt payments. And that is the impetus for shopping local, because when you, when you buy local, your, your, many of your sales tax half cents, uh, stay at home. But, uh, if we could, if we could have that reference, it should be readily available of the, the, the number of projects that have been financed with half-cent sales tax.
Since ninety-nine.
Since ninety-nine, and the location within the school district. Because, you know, I, I can think of Edna, Allen Dale, Whittenburg, the auditorium, and, and I'm missing several there. Sugarloaf. So, uh, but, uh, you know, they are always the holders of school system debt, county commissioners.
And, and to further that, we, uh, we have no debt right now. We're, all of our debts are cleared.
So, um, we have a, um, a motion, uh, by Board Member Cooksey to use lottery funds, and a second by... Mr. Schrum. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None are opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. This time, I'll recognize, uh, Board Member Ryan, uh, regarding the sponsorship of the Alexander County Public Education Foundation Sports Hall of Fame.
So, we talked about the, um, golf tournament on October twenty-ninth, and the money raised at that golf tournament helps us put on the Sports Hall of Fame event or the ceremony that will actually be November twenty-first at six o'clock. We, since this started, our school system has sponsored this, um, event to help put it on. All the proceeds go to give teachers grant money, as we discussed. And so, I'm asked, I'm coming to the board to ask if, um, we are still wanting to sponsor this event, the Sports Hall of Fame Ceremony, November twenty-first. In the past, we've done a five thousand dollar sponsorship.
Is that still adequate?
With this golf tournament, um, it is at this time. Our golf tournament, um, has been very successful, and I, I have to give kudos to Johnny Bruce. I mean, he, he started the golf tournament, he went out and worked the golf tournament. Rami's trying to fill his shoes right now with, uh, going to businesses and things, but the golf tournament, the last, I think this is our third year, and, uh, the first two years, we did very well raising money. We don't make a lot just on the event, because when we serve food, we always have, you know, you never really know exactly how many's coming, so the school sponsorship helps actually cover some of the set costs that we incur, plaques and things such as that. The golf tournament has come in on the backside and, and have the money there for the teachers.
Any questions of Board Member Ryan, uh, regarding this, uh, annual event? And, um...
I'll make a motion that we sponsor the five thousand dollar sponsor again this year.
I second it.
Motion by Board Member Schrum, second by Board Member Cooksey. Any further discussion? All in favor of the Sports Hall of Fame sponsorship in the amount of five thousand dollars, say aye. Any opposed? None are opposed? Motion carries.
Thank y'all very much.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion to remove to close session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash... Oh, well, I don't see that. But you are more than welcome to present a strategic plan.
Thanks, it is, sorry. Sorry about that. At this time, Chairman Odom, I need to ask if, I hope that you had an opportunity to read over the draft of the two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-five strategic plan. We found a couple little grammatical errors, but I would ask, did any of you see anything that you would suggest that we discuss, add, anything of that nature, or did you find anything that concerned you?
That was very well done.
You know that we have reduced from seven priorities to four priorities. Uh, we have goals and objectives, action steps, and different things, and I think that it's something that will serve us well over the next three years.
Dr. Heffner, who helped you, uh, put this together?
A, a lot of folks, uh, a lot of school leaders, a lot of central office leaders. We did have board member input as well as community input. The list of names, uh...
I was just curious, because it looks like it's taken a lot of time.
Well, what we did, we broke into subgroups under each of those priorities. Uh, thank goodness everybody's hand didn't have to go into everything in the plan itself. But probably, if I had to guess, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of what we typically use, about forty people, uh, putting all this together. And if you all are good with it, then, uh, we will take those couple revisions and gramm- uh, grammatical things and approve the plan.
Looks good.
You need a motion regarding that?
We do, we do.
I make a motion we accept the strategic plan for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Cooksey, second by Board Member Ryan. Any further discretion, discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None are opposed? Motion carries.
Good, thank you. The next time you see these priorities and everything, uh, it will be in a plan that will be very beautiful with pictures and graphs and different things. So, um, I'm excited for us to move forward.
Says on my wall mounted teleprompter that now we can actually entertain a motion to remove and to close session, discuss personnel pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point one one eight six. So moved. All in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all for coming to the meeting.